All right, I'm calling this meeting the Shastbury Select Board Together on Monday, May 4th, 2015. Whereas my brother texted me today, "May the 4th be with you." I loved it. I wrote back, "Thank you Skywalker." Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda this evening?
Nope.
Nope?
Nope.
Approval of minutes? We have minutes from the last meeting that I have edited, but we didn't get them circulated, so we're going to postpone approval of minutes. We have warrants. Can I borrow a pen? I have here, check warrant. I don't think that I can find.
That is the, actually, that's the warrant for the payment for-
To Angus, yeah. Let's wait until we do that, discuss that. This is check warrant number 23, amount of $9,155.75. I move we approve?
Second.
Secured by Mitch. Major items on this one are 1779 to PC Connection.
That's a new laptop system for the Listers. They needed, they wanted it to go into the field. The Assessor and the Listers will use it. It's quicker and more versatile than the desktops.
Okay. A number of oil bills here to Robert Green. The biggest one is $1,100. Sycamore Landscaping, $2,000. That would be cemetery mowing.
Question on the PC, is that PC here? It's going to stay with the Listers? Is it going with the consultant?
It's here. It's part of the Listers, but Jim will be using it and it's real, to have the mobility to bring it into the field. It also replaces, Jim's computer will move over and replace the Lister's computer that has been turned off for the last 10 months because it's running the old system, whose designation I don't remember.
Windows XP?
Yeah, Windows XP. So they're just going to move that computer over and they'll have the portable laptop and a backup computer.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Check warrant number 22, in the amount of $3,9158. This is just to reimburse petty cash?
Yeah, that's just a petty cash check. Put the money back in, so I can stop paying people again.
Okay. I move we approve?
What's it for?
To put money into the petty cash drawer, so he can-
Yep.
-pay people in cash.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion is approved, 5-0-0. Retirement warrant, number 22, in the amount of $113.16. Move we approve?
Second.
Secured by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Payroll warrant number 22, in the amount of $21,242.04. I move we approve?
Second.
Secured by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That's the balance sheet. Is that something you meant to keep? All right, there's one other warrant that will come up when we discuss Coal Spring in item 11. Any announcements?
Ordinary Heroes Day, May 30th, up at the Galusha Homestead. Come on out and support your ordinary hero. 2 o'clock PM.
On behalf of the fire wardens, the town's announcing a burn ban until next Sunday due to the very dry conditions and high winds. Oliver Duman and Jerry Madison informing about 5 o'clock that it's going to go into effect. So we'll put that up on the website, so even if you have a permit, they'll be contacting you not to use it at this point. Apparently, it's going to be raining, some rain on Sunday and they think it'll be better by Monday. Right now, a burn ban isn't effective for the town.
Okay.
Anybody that's got a permit will be notified.
Yeah, if you have a permit, Gary said that you would be notified, but if you have a permit, do not use it. It's very dangerous right now.
I have one, the school is having a walk to school day on Wednesday. At 8:00, between 8:00 and 8:30, we meet at T&amp;M down on Church Street, and then at 8:30, we walk to school. And anyone who would like to join us is welcome. This is part of the Vermont-wide intergenerational walk and roll to school day. Any public comments? There's no public.
No public. Too nice.
Did we, oh, I'm skipping ahead. Treasurers report, okay. Sorry, Melanie, I lost my place on my scorecard here. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to try and go into a little more detail than I did last time. The, on the revenue side, we're, when you take into account things you've probably discussed before, that the sidewalk is not happening this fiscal year, so there's a grant in there that is not going to happen. We're expecting some intergovernmental revenue in June, so that, there's various zeros that are going to be fully funded by the, by the end of the fiscal year. There are some real shortfalls in zoning permits that are not actually going to materialize, and dog fees. But taking all that into account, we're looking at revenues of 99% of budget. And that's, that's not, that's assuming no more delinquent taxes or anything that could very easily materialize. On the expenditure side, we're currently at about 77% of budget, but, but when you take out the sidewalk for the other, for the balancing side, that goes up to about 82%. So as of right now, we are expecting, the best guess is that we're going to do about $35,000 better than budget, which also included a $120,000 dip into the, the fund balance. So, so right now, the best guess is that we will dip into it only by about $85,000.
Okay.
Any questions?
Can we have a computer for now, when you do a report? Would that be possible?
Sure. Yeah, I can follow up with-
Yeah, then we can see the figures.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Anything else?
And just a comment on the sidewalk, we're not planning to get to it before the end of June, but we're hoping still to get to it this summer.
Has it been approved?
Yeah, it's been approved. Actually, I was going to bring that up later, but the easement is being signed by Trevor, which is one of the last steps. It's in state review, which should come out very quickly, and talking to KAS. It's still plenty of time to bid. Construction period is actually very short. So it's not happening in this fiscal year, but it will most definitely happen before the end of the year, and we're still hoping on August. They're still telling me optimistically that we can get it done in August. Like I said, it's not, you know, it's not a big, huge project, so they're hoping, you know, a bidder will, one of these things to fill in a little block of time for them. You know, it's something a smaller company can do too, you know, it's not-
When they, the state, is saying August, or?
The KAS and the state thinks it'll be small. The KAS believes that if we get it back in the next week or so, which everyone seems to think we will, they, it's designed, it's just writing the specs, putting it out to bid, and scheduling it. That's the quickest part, and, you know, almost, the construction will be the quickest part of this whole project.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure they weren't saying, "We'll get our permits in August."
No, 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 no. This last thing is, was the last, the 1111 easement permit from the state was the last thing. So I spoke to Trevor's attorney, Trevor, the other day, and they're signing up, and we'll be ready to go, as long, as soon as we get it back, KAS will put through the plan.
Okay.
What's the plan, Dave? That's going to be down there across where the bank was, right?
Yes.
What's the plan on those big willow trees there, so that they don't get killed?
That I'll have to pull out the plan and look at. I'm not familiar with-
Because those trees now are moving the sidewalk, the roots of them.
I'd really have to look, Ken. I don't, I don't even know where they are on the plan, or-
All right, but you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but I think they might even pass the edge of Trevor's property, aren't they?
Yeah, that's between, well, you go from where Trevor's property is, headed down toward Cleveland Avenue.
Yeah, I have to check. I'm not even sure how far down towards Cleveland this is going.
I thought it was going all the way down to the corner.
I'll have to pull it out.
Supposed to join, join the sidewalk.
Yeah, it should join the corner, yeah, you're right. I'll have to look, I don't know if the trees were-
I mean, I'd hate to see those, you know, I mean, those trees are huge.
Well, you can always bend, we're getting off topic of the Treasurers report, but you can always bend the sidewalk around. Probably costs 50 bucks more, but we can curve it around.
Make it handy for plowing.
Yeah, good point. We'll have to look at that. Make sure that, surely the design didn't include cutting down those trees.
Well, look.
Some of those roots, Tim, are like 6 inches.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And I think this other sidewalk is wider than the one that's there.
Oh, undoubtedly. The new specs would have it wider.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, my man.
Thank you, honey. Thank you, Melanie, sorry, we, uh-
Sorry, we digress.
We digress, yeah. We do it so much, we don't even realize we're being rude.
Steve was here a few minutes ago, and I said we probably wouldn't get to him till 7:00. He wanted to go make a stop, so he's late because it's my fault. I told him to take 5:00.
All right, we'll just move along and then come back to, to him when he arrives, without objection. The agenda circulated was a bullet about North Road property purchase, which I think was just left over from last week. We have no business to discuss there, but we can just inform you that, that we're moving toward closing on that. We, the loan is approved, though we have the money from the loan, and Wilmington's office is handling the closing, and they're trying to set it up for later this week or early next week.
Just as soon as you have a date, let me know, so we can get the check made out.
Okay, item 10, we are opening bids on Howard Park Roofing tonight.
Well, actually, we're not opening the bids because we didn't receive any, which, which kind of surprised me from a couple of people who were in here. I think the problem lies in the formality of the bidding process when you're over 10,000. This project was running right on the edge of 10,000. So what I'm suggesting is I'll trim a portion of it and seek proposals to do it, because we was riding right on the edge of 10,000. I'm not quite sure why we didn't get any bids on it, but the formality of the, a formal bid process requires a lot of time, and maybe people just didn't want to bother with it. There possibly was some confusion too, because there were two bids out there for Howard Park. The tennis courts aren't due for two more weeks, so I'm wondering if someone made them, you know, was, read them wrong date in their head, because the tennis courts, most of the companies we're aware of are a bigger distance, and if they want to come down, I want to give them a little extra time to inspect the courts before they made a bid. So what I'll do is I'll just seek proposals now. If we have to trim a little bit, then we will, and we'll do some of the work ourselves on the woodwork, to keep it under 10.
Well, we have another option, which is to decide to override policy on this. Policy is there as a, as a suggestion and a rule for making sure that the process is open. We opened the process, nobody responded. If the reason is that it's because it's over 10,000, they don't want to go through all that work for a $10,001 project, we can, we can, we can decide to forego formal bids and just take, take the three quotes that would be appropriate for something at $9,900.
Yeah, because when Doxy did the proposal or the estimates for him, so we could put in for the grant, it ran, depending on choices, just a hair over 10,000, getting close to 11,000, I think it was. So, you know, we're riding this fine line. I'm sure I can get three proposals to do the work, and it's going to be right around the cutoff line, so.
What's the formality that somebody would have to do if they're over 10,000?
Well, they have to write up, write up the proposal, just, it just gets more formal than, than just giving me a proposal on the work.
Like an estimate?
Yeah, an estimate. People just view it as more time-consuming.
They don't have to be bonded or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
No, you know, and it's, in total, it's, it's not even a lot of roofing. My, my estimate of it being over 10,000 is based on the one I submitted to the state that was given to me by a local contractor, so, had to get the grant to do it. So, you know, I contacted Vermont and Doxy, and another local builder had been in here talking about it, and I was kind of surprised that I didn't get one. Maybe there's confusion, maybe the weather got to everybody and they forgot, I don't know, but I know I can get three proposals to do it.
Okay. Need a motion for?
Yeah.
I make a motion that, that Dave, contact three people that are, they'll get at least three proposals, and they'll, we'll use that as the-
Bid?
As the bid, I guess.
Yeah. So I will motion to set aside purchase policy for the Howard Park Roofing bids, which may be slightly over 10,000, and accept three non-formal bids for the work. I'll second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approves, 5-0-0.
I'll get three for the next meeting then.
Steve Washburn, welcome. All right, road foreman's report, what's the, what's the status out there?
We're about around with the first round of scraping, grading, getting down to the end of the last lower-traveled roads.
Mm-hmm.
About ready to, probably next week, head around again. Roll of Ross finally did come out.
Still coming out in places.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
We're ditching and cleaning up around town. We've been cleaning intersections and picking up sand and stuff from winter time plowing and trying to catch up with that as well.
Where are the, the bad spots now?
You've taken care of probably the worst of them now. I wouldn't call anything really bad right now.
Rollin' Road hasn't been touched at all.
No, it's, that's on the list for this week.
Right on.
Yeah, on the, on the website are the roads that are projected to be done this week. Rollin' Road and Coal Spring, I think, Steve, are both on the same day later on, and State Line Road, I think that might be Thursday or something. Yeah.
Yeah, that's worth drawing more attention to, the fact that we now have a, a place on the website where you can go and see what the plan for the week in terms of the roads are. That plan is, of course, subject to change as emergencies and weather and other things happen, but if you're wondering if you're due to be graded, you can look there and find out. What's the situation with, with the chloride? We've had quite a few complaints about dust since we started the preliminary scraping.
We usually don't apply it until the second round of scraping, when everything dries out, and it can pack in and stay as good as it can. If we put it down too early, you just tear it up again and you got to reapply it.
Did you read that thing in the Science Journal about the chloride levels and the smaller organisms are increasing because of the amount of chloride we town put on the road?
No.
Yeah. That was in, was on one of the, maybe it was a Smithsonian, I don't know, one of those, one of those articles.
What's in?
The chloride is, the smaller reptiles and so forth, or the chloride that's put on the road is actually getting into their system and is coming up the food chain.
I'll have to go back to used oil.
Oil, I was going to say that. We'd all be in leather.
Okay.
The other issue with the chloride is, is it's, it's quite expensive. If it's, if it's put out properly, it costs about $1,500 a mile, and we don't even budget enough to do each road once. So I know people have asked some questions now about getting chloride, but we are trying to wait to the second round. We've addressed a couple of people with health issues, obviously, we're making exemptions for that, but I had a request for one road today, and it's already scheduled for its second one next week, so if we do it, it's just wasting. And like I said, at $1,500 a mile, you know, at, at the rate it's supposed to be applied, it's, I think it's very expensive, and that's not a thick application either, that's the mid-range. So I'm trying to even pick, when we're looking at the roads, when they are graded, we still have to look at roads like what section can we skip chloriding, and just do it where it's close to houses and close to people to try and keep, keep the dust down, because we'd like to do the two applications of chloride the first time and the second time that we go around, but we do have to be aware of the, the expense and the limits and the budget to this. There are good chunks of road that we can just skip because it's not near any houses, it's in the woods or whatever, but we still have a substantial number of miles of road that, that will need it.
Is there any other substitute besides chloride out on the market today?
Use magnesium chloride, it's about the same in price, though.
Yeah.
Have they tried the flake chloride?
Used to use flake chloride.
I know they do.
I don't know, I've never, since I've been here, we haven't used it.
I'm just wondering, because that's solid, and you got the liquid, they, when I was on, they tried to get me to buy that stuff, but I couldn't. Figure out, oh, you're putting something out there, you're going to dilute it when you put it on.
Yeah, that's what you have to do, you have to, if you, if you use the flakes, you have to run a tanker truck over it and spray it down.
We never did. It makes its own liquid.
They, they-
Draws the moisture right out of the air.
Yeah, but not, not quick, well, according to Vermont local roads.
I don't know, I mean, I'm just, you know.
It says the flakes and the pellets need to be, to be wet, or you have to apply it when the roads are, are wet.
Got the tanker, you could always do it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it almost gets, in cost comparison too, I think it gets to be apples and oranges, because the chloride's mixed in the tanker and we're applying it that way, or we have one unit to spread the pellets of flakes, and then the tanker has to go over it. So you got redundant manpower to cover the same stretch of road.
I'm just wondering if it'll last longer, I mean, I don't-
It doesn't, it doesn't indicate that it works any better.
I don't know how it would work out cost-wise either.
Yeah. It doesn't indicate, at least from what they say, that it makes any difference, because I looked into that too, even with the complaint we had on Lamb. It's like, I was just wondering if we even had any bags we could just run over and spread around, but it doesn't seem to make much difference, and the road was so dry, we would have had to spray it anyway.
Yeah.
So it comes out about the same. We just need more money to, to do more, which we'll address further on as these issues come up and we find them, but we do want to hold off a little bit on spraying too early when a road, most of the roads that have problems now are going to be regraded, what, within a week or two, and then the chloride will go down. If we do it now, it's just gone.
Around June, we start to put it down, usually.
Yeah.
Okay. You need to be commended about doing ditches. A lot of times when you find a bad spot in the road, you look over and sure enough, the ditch is-
Plugged.
Plugged. And I saw it, Daniels wrote, "Good job." It saves a lot, just getting the ditches cleaned out.
If you can't get out of the road.
That's right.
Any more questions for Steve?
Nope.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, Treasurer, North Road, Howard Park, Coal Spring. We, as the board, decided not to release any of the Coal Spring of the grant money from the Vermont Art Council grant last week, but we do owe Angus McCullough $700 for 20 hours of work that he has done with me and on his own relative to getting that project going, which involved brainstorming, generating ideas. I sent you around a packet of stuff that he generated. He also spent a fair amount of time taking the, the pipeline survey and overlaying it on a map, converting the units, so that we can see when we get to that, who the landowners are that are affected, that are on that pipeline. So we need to approve, the way to handle that is this check warrant, which is number, can't find a number, but it's for $700, and it's for Angus McCullough, for work that he has done on that, and it would be paid for with the Vermont Art Council-
Grant funds.
I, I move we approve the check warrant. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion is approved, 5-0-0. Thank you.
So he's not doing anything more at this point? Stop, I'll stop.
Can we, do you need approval for getting some, some legal counsel on this before we go any further?
I do. I, I feel no, no authority to spend town money on this without, without the board's approval, so yes, it would be very helpful if we could get a legal opinion about the status of the land there, much like we get legal opinions on things we do as a matter of course every day.
I think we've got to, otherwise, this isn't going to go anyplace. I don't know if you want to put a limit on it, or what, but I, I think we've got, we got to find out where we stand legally, before we go any further.
Well, if, go ahead.
Can we, what, do you need a motion before we have a discussion?
That's usually the, the way to do it. Art is moved that we seek a legal opinion about the, the issues involved in creating a memorial site, let's say a historic park at Coal Spring, and I will second it.
Discussion? What's the limit going to be?
Before you even go there, I'm still, I haven't been there, I mean, I've been by it. How do the people get water from that spring? So the pipes are, where are the pipes located?
They, they come in to where the water boils up out of the ground.
Okay. And that's right at that junction there?
It's right there.
Boy, you know, I'm, I'm still kind of really frightened of even going there, particularly, I mean, we've gotten some, you know, people who have already emailed us with that and with concerns about it, and the fact that it runs the way it runs. You know, I'm, beside legal, I mean, I think we're also talking about engineering too.
Certainly.
And, and all, I mean, that, that's, and I don't know if we even want to go there, open up a Pandora's box, but I'm also concerned about the fact that, you know, how, how the people who use that water are, you know, are going to be, if something ever happened there, I would be really, really distressed, so.
My thought was that if we at least get a legal opinion, and they come back and say, "Look, it, it's going to be a huge can of worms, you've got to get everybody's permission" and all that sort of stuff, at least we can say, "Okay, we'll scale it down to a plaque or, or a history marker or something like that." I don't think there's-
I don't think there's any problem with that. But I, I just don't see how we can design anything, look at anything until we have a legal opinion. And until that, till that time, I just think we're dead in the water.
Yeah, the town voted no not to put a ten thousand dollars in.
Exactly.
Yeah, but, you know.
We voted last week not to put in nineteen hundred for the plan.
You voted last week not to allow me to spend grant money.
Grant money, that's right.
Which would is, which is liability, what to spend?
Well, yeah, I was, we were just concerned that, I, I just think we've gotta...
Have you found out if, what would happen if you spent that and it didn't go any further? We have to pay it all back? Or if we show them what we have done, or what you have done with that money, even though it doesn't go forward, or for whatever reason, have you asked them what happens then?
If we take the money for this project and we don't build a project, we have to give the money back, yes.
Well, it's the art rendition and material, that's what it was, right? An artist's rendition and some material?
It's for art design and for, um, art fabrication. But the, the purpose of the grant is to beautify infrastructure projects that towns intend to do. So, if we spend fifteen hundred, or fifteen thousand dollars on art design and fabrication and, uh, don't do anything with it, that would not be in the spirit of the grant.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I suspect they would want that money back, yes.
Well, what's the liability of the town?
Well, that's what we gotta...
And, well, what I'm saying, if we go down there and we get it there, and you go to all these people, they're on that water line. And they've been there for, well, a hundred years. And then you build a park down there, and something happens like it did up to our park up here. You get vandalism or something like that, then you got a, kind of a bad situation. Cause I worked on a jab down in Bennington, and they had, it was a historical site. And it was a kiln where they had a, and we had a guy down there from the Bennington Museum and everything else. And they got down there, we dug this up very carefully, and we found this kiln. It was all blocked up. Of course, you got the school right next door, on, on, with a park street down there. And the guy said, "Oh, we gotta go show this to the school kids." I said, "Don't do that. You're gonna be sorry." And, I mean, he didn't listen to me. So, went over next morning, he come back, and it was all smashed. Broke. It's just like setting a Christmas present out for a kid, saying, "Don't touch it." Well, they want that. And that, that's a concern of mine too. So, that's why I say, like, I agree with Art, that we really gotta find out what's going on here.
Well, I agree, uh, we, there's legwork that hasn't happened, that needed to happen on this because we didn't have money to do it. It, uh, this started with the idea that Coal Spring is important. Uh, historically, it's an, an important natural resource. Wouldn't it be nice if, uh, the, the site looked like something other than a ditch, which is what it is now? What happened first was that we received a Vermont Art Council grant to go that. Because I applied for that grant because the deadline was coming up, and it seemed like a perfect fit, and we received the grant. But yes, where there's, there's legal issues that need to get fleshed out, there are, uh, engineering issues that, that need to get fleshed out. Uh, we, uh, if we had gotten the ten thousand dollars from the town, that would've all flown smoothly, and we'd have this project in two years. But without that money, uh, what we're looking at is, uh, how do we move forward?
How about something less, in, less, uh, less, uh, that costs less money and do a, so you walk down and talk to the people that are on the, on the line? And ask them individually whether they would like to have this done or not, all of them. And you got all the points where they pull them off on that, that document. That way you don't need a legal opinion. If you get five out of six people saying, "I don't want you touching it."
You do need a legal opinion.
Well, before that, I'm saying, I mean, if you got five people that don't want it to be touched, which we've gotten a couple emails on, I don't think we should.
Go near it.
Go near it. I mean, you're pushy. The town voted no to, to spend money on it once. We just spent a little money on it because we jumped the gun. And I, I'm, it's not our money, you know? It's the town taxpayers' money.
I'm more concerned about it being a public works project as opposed to a historic project. Uh, you know, I'm still, I, I'm, I'm not getting the significance of my, placing a monument on a water site. I mean, I'm thinking the aqueduct is far more artistic and historic than the source. So, I, I, you know, I mean, I'm, but I, I'm thinking our liability as a town for that water source for a group of people is far greater than, than the historic significance of that water source.
And the, uh, the, um, emergency plan, all through that, it says, "Do not affect water sources, do not..."
Yeah.
Flood zones, all that stuff. It basically points those right out, all the changes that were done are, are right there.
I'm thinking the, uh, Natural Resources Department is the go-to people as opposed to historic.
So, so is that arch on your property?
The, the bridge, the bridge over Coal Spring Brook, that carries the aqueduct over the Brook is on my property.
It's far enough away from the thing to put up a little plaque and have a walkway to that, but you'd, you'd have people on your property all the time, and have a plaque or something on that. I don't think you need a fountain, and, I mean, people go down and drink that anyway.
Well, the, like I say, the way it started was, uh, wouldn't it be nice if we could make that site look nicer? Uh, there, here was a grant that was tailor-made for that kind of project. We applied for it, the people who gave them the grant agreed it was tailor-made for that and gave us the money. I thought at the time we had select board support for this project. I still think that, you know, we should, when, we should, when we can, make an effort to improve the town. Make it look nicer, uh, make it more attractive to businesses and residences. Uh, something like this would do that. Getting the garage out of the Village Center would, would do that. These are things I think we should do.
Get the sidewalk done would do that.
Getting the sidewalk done would do that, yes.
But, but... But I also agree with, with Tony, is that, that comes under the business of public works. I mean, if, when you start going there, I've put up this concrete blocks, and then the road gets raised, and I put up some work on the great blocks and all that sort of stuff. That, you s, I don't know how long those blocks will hold, whether they, you need to start over with pouring concrete walls and all that sort of stuff. That, you're getting into a, almost like you said, almost like a public works type of thing, so. Whether that comes under the, the juris, the, uh, and it, and there's, there's just that whole legal thing. I just think we've gotta, one way or another, we gotta solve the, the legal thing before we go any further.
Well, quick call to the A and R too. The, the Natural Resources.
I think...
Get their, get their opinion, that doesn't cost anything.
Yeah.
Well, that's, you know, that's...
I'm really afraid of disturbing it. I really am. I mean, the more attention is called to it, the more I'm concerned about it being disturbed. And that people are now aware of it, and now they're gonna go tranching around people's water source. And I, and I just am careful.
So, so we don't have to hire a lawyer? Maybe my motion is that, that we at least look, National Resources or somebody upstate, that, that can give us some guidance on this thing. Just looking for some guidance, one way or the other.
Like, like Tony says, it, you know, you're dealing with something that's been in there a hundred years plus. I don't think you oughta go poking around in there too much.
No, I mean, you know, I get my water from Monaca for it, and I'm, you know, if somebody builds behind me, they're gonna disturb my Monaca for it, and, uh, yeah.
Well, of course, the, we had, I never had any intention of disturbing the site.
No, I know, I know.
We're talking about decorating the site, is, is what this was, was, was for. You know, I mean, how many years ago we dug up the site and poured gravel in there to make sure the water was, kept flowing? I mean, that's, that's, that's touching the site.
But I had people's permission, I had everybody that uses it permission to do that, and they helped pay for it.
And it worked. It kinda worked, if you can disturb it.
And the way it is right now, you, most people go right by it, and they, they're not, it's not gonna draw attention to it.
No. So, do we, do we need a motion for Dave to do that, to look at Natural Resources first, go to Natural Resources?
We got a motion.
We've got a motion. The motion is to, to seek a legal opinion on the, uh, water rights and the status, status of the land at the site.
And it doesn't have to be through a lawyer, maybe, you know, you can interpret my motion as being at least looking at somebody from the state to get a, get a legal opinion. Doesn't mean Rob Wilmington.
Well, we probably need a legal opinion.
Well, yeah.
I think that's a, that's a good first step.
I would think the, the first step would be to go talk to the people that we know are, get their water from there. And if they all agree with it, then you get the legal opinion to find out what, what type of documents you're gonna have to draw up to make that happen.
So, so your, your mo, your thought is that anybody on that line has veto power over this project?
Well, for the most part, I would say. I mean, that's a, that's, that's, you know, fifty-fifty split, you can flip a coin maybe. But we've got a couple letters from the, from people that give water from that.
Who didn't know what the project was about, and they were concerned about it. Rightfully so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they don't know what the project is about because the project hasn't moved forward very much at all for lack of funds.
Mitch, I think it's important to point out is that there aren't that many people that are using the water, but there's a lot of people that have a deeded right to that thing because, and they don't happen to use it now, but that doesn't mean that that doesn't go away. So, it, I think you're gonna find there's a lot of people that get involved in this, not, not just the ones that just use it. And that's why I want a legal opinion, how far do you have to go? Also, the line, at the time the line was put through everybody's land, all the way from Spring to North Bennington, they were told if the land went through, if the pipeline went through your land, you had a, you could tap onto it at any time. Now, are all those people, do they have legal, you know, since, I think it goes through Tony's land?
It does.
Does he? If, but maybe it didn't get followed through with all the deeds? And that's, you're getting into an awful mess, in my opinion. But that's why I think we've gotta look at all that before we go any further.
I think Art's right, the, the first thing that needed to happen, which I haven't had money to do, is to find out if there's, uh, a way for this project to go forward legally. If, uh... Someone want to amend this motion to put a cap on the amount that we spend on, on an initial legal opinion?
It's a lawyer, get a hundred dollars, they get a hundred or two hundred dollars an hour? Depends on what Wilmington's prices.
Well, is it our town attorney, a retainer anyway?
No, not, not for this, this would be a project for him. I, I would perhaps, uh, ask him for a scope of the project first because we're talking about potentially, from what Art's saying, a lot of deed research here.
Yeah.
Can be better spent on them.
Well, I, I think we should have a scope before, you know, what exactly we're looking for. Cause that, that can add up kinda quickly too.
Okay, so, I'll amend my motion to, that we, that we ask for a scope of, uh, before we go through with my original motion.
Second. The, uh, the amendment is that we, uh, we changed the motion to read that we ask, uh, the town attorney for a, uh...
Planning estimate.
Scope of the legal issues that would be involved in placing a historic park at the headwaters of Coal Spring.
A planning estimate of some sort? Or for a legal planning estimate, legal?
A legal planning estimate?
Yeah, we could get that point across to him.
Yeah, I think it's...
And then, and in the meantime, you could call the A and R, Art, and, and ask them for the...
Yeah, I can just call the A and R. I don't know if they, this is all private property, so I don't know, they, they get into everything, so I don't know. That's a good point, maybe we should just find out.
Well, I can call the A and R, uh, but they're, you know, they're gonna ask, "What are you gonna do?" And we don't, we're gonna, we don't know yet. That's, that's kinda the whole chicken and egg question that's been plaguing the project from the beginning.
It's like, "I can't go forward because I don't..."
"And you won't let me go forward because I don't have a plan." But, uh, what we have before us now is a, a motion to, uh, get a scope of the legal issues involved in placing a historic park at Coal Spring. Does that wording sound okay to you?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Uh, Art moved that, I second it. Any more discussion on that? On the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
So, the, back to the original motion, the motion reads, uh, that we ask the attorney for a, uh, scope of work in the legal issues involved in placing a historic park at the headwaters of Coal Spring. Any more discussion?
So, do we approve it or disapprove it? Cause we just, I'm confused over whether we wanna approve the second one.
We have, we have changed the original motion to read, "We're asking for a, uh, scope of legal work involved in placing a, a historic park at Coal Spring." That is the issue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? So, the motion is that we will ask the town attorney for a scope of legal work involved in placing a historic park at Coal Spring.
What it would entail to, uh...
Research all the deeds.
Research all the deeds and, and, uh, whether or not we would need, uh, what exactly what legal standing each potential deed holder has, or veto power they would have.
More than four or five hours on it.
Well, you know, yeah, we'll limit it down to, you know, okay, if you wanna go forward, this is the scope of this project, would be researching, who knows how many deeds by what Art's saying, if it passes through somebody's yard. But maybe they'll say you don't need to do that.
Yeah, he's just gonna give us an answer.
Well, is that document, or that was put in the deeds of all the people that, the property, the pipe, when it's in your deed? You have it, you can tap into that when you...
I gotta find it.
No, it's not in my deed, and it goes over my property.
Well, they dropped it at, at sales.
Exactly. If, if, a lot of times if it doesn't get brought forward when it's, when a sale happens, then it's lost, but...
Yep.
That's what I'm saying, so have a look.
It's amazing how that works.
Yeah, well, I mean, do we know that that was written into any deeds? Or was it just Trentor back in the day, Trentor Park said back in the day, "Can I, can I put this pipe on your land, and if I do, you can have water?" And that may be the extent of...
I agree, and, you know, it's, so, these are the things we gotta find out.
Still more we don't know.
All right.
I would think that would be in a document somewhere that Angus got.
That's what, that was my, I said a couple of weeks ago, I always said, Angus should have access to the McCullough stuff. Okay.
Yeah, well, Angus is not gonna do any work for free. He's an artist, not a, not a...
He's a lawyer. It's in McCullough, right? Anyway, I won't go there.
Okay, uh, we are up to item twelve, Shasbury Fire Department Appointments.
Okay, a letter from the fire chief requesting, uh, the appointments of the chief and two deputy chiefs for the year. Uh, they've all been voted on by the membership in these other nominations.
The Shasbury Fire Department is submitting for your approval of the following names as chief officers of the Shasbury Fire Department for the upcoming year. These individuals were, will serve May one, twenty fifteen, to May one, twenty sixteen. Chief Joseph Vatican, Assistant Chief Jay Coonrat, Second Assistant Chief Mike Taylor. I move we approve the appointment of officers from the Fire Department.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion is approved, five zero zero. Item thirteen, Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance Ordinance.
Sign something.
Final.
This is the third reading of the ordinance. For the third time, it's on the one minutes for the ordinance. Uh, it's been posted in the appropriate places around town, it's on the webpage. Uh, there is still... Three, four, four, what is it? About ten days left to file an appeal of this ordinance. It's forty-four days from the date of publication, which was the sixth, the day of the first reading. So, you have till, uh, May tenth to, uh, for the forty-four day period. Otherwise, it will be effective on the sixtieth day. Uh, again, more information, the full document is available on the webpage, at Town Hall, at, uh, both, uh, post offices. It's posted there, it's easiest to read on... at, uh, both, uh, post offices. It's posted there. It's easiest to read online, clearly. If anyone needs a copy, they can stop by Town Hall too and we'll print them a copy. But Mitch, I don't know if you wanna explain it again, what, uh-
Well, basically it's the ordinance is for the pay-as-you throw, which Shasbury has, uh, already been doing for the last few years. It's more of a formality, so for the alliance, which is the thirteen towns in Bennington County, which are joining to create this alliance and it's, uh, it's a uniform ordinance. Uniform ordinance, uh, there's slight differences between the towns. The contract is identical for all the towns. It's, it's, it's no, no, really no change for Shasbury at this point, cause we have the pay-as-you throw now.
It does include, does it not, the, uh, the small fifty dollar registration fee for haulers?
That is the, uh, yes, that is, that is an ordinance, yes.
That is new.
That is the ordinance, yes.
Right.
Uh, that, that's so we can get, uh, start collecting, the alliance can start collecting data to see if the act is actually working. We're starting to get, we wanna get metrics to prove that the actual recycling is going up. We had, uh, the weight of the, um, you know, disposal, landfill disposals going down based on the amount of organics in the waste stream. So if you remove, remove those theoretically, the volumes should go down. I mean, everything else equal. Subject to, you know, there's always interpretations of any type of data that you, you get, but, uh, I think it's, it's a good step forward and it, and it basically, it lets the people, the towns know that the people that are hauling their trash understand what's going on and why they're supposed to be doing it. I was talking to a person from New York that comes over to Vermont and he was, didn't know what he was supposed to do and all this stuff. It was a different township, uh, different county, but he was very concerned with it, but he'll do what he has to do. Basically, it, the retrofit of the organic houser area, housing, basically you have three, you have waste, recyclables, and organics now. You have three bins on your truck. Or you make, one, one day you do the garbage and recyclables, another day you take another trip and do this thing. So it's, it's, it is an increase for the haulers. But not, nothing, and one of the concerns this other person had, this hauler, says, where are we gonna put all this stuff? I mean, it decomposes, he, his point was it decomposes in the, in the, uh, if it's turned up properly in the, in the landfill, but I, I think I told him that it's for the land remediation to get more organics back on the, you know. It's not much we can do about it. It's, it's, it's an act and we have to adhere to it.
And they're doing the educational piece in the schools, right?
That's part of the program we'll be doing in the next, I think there's like four outreach. I can't remember the exact number.
I, I forget too.
Yeah, they have had, it starts off, we're doing good anyways. I think, uh, Tam and the guy from, uh, the Northeast Kingdom there came down and did a couple separation of we, and they, and Bennington Middle School and the elementary school and the high school, I think, so. It's, we, we, Bennington County is actually farther ahead than a lot of the counties in the state. Or, or Shasbury, I should say, in Benning-
Yeah, Shasbury actually has many of those things.
Towns are a little bit, they're catching, running as fast as they can to catch up and it's-
And hopefully there'll be more information for, for people individually to start their own recycling.
Yep, that's incentive, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
The, uh, there is another meeting, May twelfth. I believe they're open. So up in the Arlington, uh, Town Office, if anyone's interested. Four to six.
Four to six. And they are public meetings.
Yes, they are public meetings.
So, uh, remind me the timeline after tonight. We have, uh, fulfilled our, our-
Yeah, sixty days. It's, uh, goes into effect sixty days after, uh, April sixth, I think is when we adopted it.
Okay.
Yeah, April sixth. And we have till, or anyone in the public has until May tenth to, uh, appeal it. And after that, uh, that time limit's up and becomes effective, uh, sixty days after the sixth of April.
Okay. Any more on solid waste?
Just a, just a thing to, for Tony, uh, they, the whole alliance has to set up all these processes of when we're gonna do the education, with how many, it's, it's, you know, it's like forming another intergovernmental department. And they, they will have a budget based on the towns, it's based on the population. Each town gives so much to the alliance. The alliance collects all the data and sends it up to the state and- It's, uh, everyone's learning, so it's not like everyone knows something. It's something changes every meeting.
Yeah, a lot of different opinions come in on every meeting, so we're all kinda grappling with the different things and it's, it's coming up well though.
Yeah, I think it's moving forward.
And really Shasbury is ahead and the counties are ahead. Some of the other places in the state are having a much harder time. Just a few changes to the way things will be done mostly. And that reminds me, hazardous household waste day is this Saturday at, uh, in Bennington. We'll get that out, just remind me of that. Uh, and that's one of the things that will change is that it's unlikely Shasbury will have a hazardous house, household waste day again, uh, because we're moving to different locations as part of the countywide alliance. It makes things cheaper and easier to manage. Uh, so this Saturday is Household Hazardous Waste Day in Bennington.
So somebody from Shasbury going there, do they have to have, uh, Shasbury sticker on, or what?
They, they can go there. What we would do when we had them here, we would just ask if you were from one of the towns.
Okay.
And you would just say, I'm from, I think, uh, well, like Palinol used to come here. You'd just say, we're from Palinol. And that was really just for recording purposes, cause we were trying to gauge where things were coming from too.
So they don't have to have any proof when they go there?
No.
I think we did talk about, uh, at one point that Bennington was looking into a permanent house, but I, that was, I think, cost prohibitive. Uh, I don't think that's going forward. It'll be, it'll be staged in days like we have been going forward.
There's requirements to have one in the northern part, one in the southern part of the county, so-
No more than twenty miles apart. You gotta be able to, you know, set, divide them so you don't have to do more than four, two. What, ideally, Bennington County would like to do two. And the way it's set up, we can do that with the, uh, mile limits they put on away from the drop-off points per event.
Yes.
All right. Item fourteen, we have a request for an easement across Madison Road for a septic line to be put under the road.
Yeah, I've been, uh, working with Bankton College. Uh, their septic field at the President's House failed. And, uh, they found an acceptable field on the other side of Madison Road. Uh, they requested the town, uh, for an easement to run the pipe underneath the roadway. Wilmington's office has produced the documents, which will be paid for by Bankton College, for the easement deed. Uh, this is, came to us last week, uh, from the law firm. Uh, it just basically gives them permission to, uh, put the pipe under the road, uh, according to the engineers documentation and presentation. Uh, what it requires is just a signature, uh, probably the chairman, uh, done with, we're witness and with Judy downstairs to certify it. It's just recorded, so that's always, you know, in our files, that they do have an easement, uh, on the advice of the assessor. Uh, there is no value assigned to the easement. Uh, he says that just isn't done. So, uh, there is a Vermont property tax, transfer tax return that goes in, but it's of no value, so, yeah, it wouldn't be a big issue.
No, that's a dirt road, right?
That's a dirt road, yes.
Now, that hasn't been resurfaced and felted and-
No, there's nothing there. And actually, the, the contractor, uh, will, uh, restore the road, uh, to today's standards.
How far deep is it? Six feet?
Yeah, it's under the, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember right off the top of my head, but it, it was all designed out so that would be deep enough to, uh, withstand the winters. Uh, it's all gonna be marked where it is, so we'll always know where it is.
Is it a sleeve pipe?
Yes, I believe it is.
Okay.
I'd have to check.
Well, they sleeve it, they don't have to dig road up again.
Yeah, don't quote me on that, but, uh-
Well, I would insist, I think I would just insist on that.
Okay.
Explain that?
A sleeve pipe, you put in one bigger than the one you use and then you can just slay it through, if you have to replace it.
That's, that sounds familiar, but I, I don't wanna say something that I can't guarantee and I don't have all the paperwork for that with me.
It's not that much, well, one of you just, you know, use it.
Yeah, no, no. The one thing that they had asked in the beginning was, cause there was discussion of, uh, uh, you can actually like borrow underneath the whole road.
Yeah, they have that boring machine, blood boring.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, they specifically asked if we, if we would allow the trenching because the cost of the boring would be, uh, ten to fifteen thousand dollars. And, uh-
Okay.
Lost today, I don't know.
Run business.
Yeah, but, uh, so the, uh, the trenching, the restoration of the road, the road hasn't been, had any significant work on it in, in quite some time.
Then it'll be done quick.
It'll be done quick and over. And they've also said that should a problem come up, they'll come back and, uh, do whatever needs to be done in case it develops a little dip as it settles.
If they can pack it with a machine.
It shouldn't dip at all.
Shouldn't bother anyway.
No, if it's done correctly, it shouldn't move. In fact, it'll probably be more stable than other parts of the road, so. Uh, cause they'll, they'll speck it out completely to the way it should be built today, if you're gonna rebuild the whole road.
It'll let you grate at what you never know it anyway.
Yep, pretty much.
Do you see any, uh, any downside in this for us?
I, I'm just concerned about tearing up the road, but if they, if it's a good construction for them, I think they'll put it back together, but I, I think we've gotta make sure that's sleeved.
Okay.
All right.
I will definitely make, uh, that inquiry. Uh, it may be in the plans, I don't, I do remember that coming up. I'll just have to check again.
Well, if they line more, it'll be sleeved anyway.
Yeah.
But if you dig it with an excavator, you should have it sleeved.
Yeah, it wouldn't, actually, it wouldn't make any sense not to have it sleeved underneath the road. You wouldn't wanna be digging it up for nothing. So, I'll just check again on that.
Okay.
So do you need a motion for Tim to sign it?
Yeah, I think we need a motion to allow Tim to come in to the office and sign, uh, because that's be, uh, witnessed and it has to be notarized. So Judy would be able to do that downstairs.
So moved.
Second.
Did you wanna make that contingent on-
Yes.
On the sleeving?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll amend that to make sure it's sleeved.
If it's not sleeved, uh, we don't approve it. What, what deadline are we against on that?
Uh, none. They're, they're already doing their work up in the fields, everything else, uh, so, uh, I mean, we could just say it. I mean, they're gonna have the trench open, okay, put a sleeve, you know, sleeve the pipe under the road. But what they do on their private property is up to them, but under the road, put a sleeve on it. I can't imagine there'd be any objection to that at all.
Okay, so the motion is that the, uh, the chair be allowed to sign the easement for the, for Bennington College to run a septic line under Madison Road, contingent upon determining that the, uh, pipe will be sleeved so that it can be repaired without damaging the road in the future. And that was moved by-
Tony.
Tony. Seconded by Mitch. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved, five zero zero. Listers request for extension on the grand list.
The listers have requested a thirty-day extension in the filing of the grand list for the town. The extension is needed to complete inspections of properties that are under, that are under construction and needing adjustments and valuations. Uh, this is a letter to, uh, the acting director of the property valuation and review, uh, to the state. They ask the select board to, uh, uh, approve of the extension.
Uh, I move we approve a select, uh, a thirty-day extension to the, uh, as requested by the listers on preparing the grand list. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Uh, we've done this in the past, I recall. It's, uh, uh, not gonna put us in any kind of bind as long as we get, uh, the grand list by August when we need to set the tax rate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved, five zero zero. Environmental Issues Committee.
Yeah, actually, I, I think Mitch can help me out with this because, uh, we had, uh, I had an inquiry whether that committee still existed and Mitch says they just had a meeting, so I just-
They had a meeting, oh, a few weeks ago. Uh, Karen, Mike Biddy, uh, Bill Pennebaker. There were two other people in there too. I can't even remember. I mean, this was a month, month and a half ago. I'm just-
I'm wondering if we missed.
I'm trying, I'm trying to remember what we talked about. I don't remember seeing the minutes of it, but, yes, I believe we have the environment, environmental issues.
Yeah, if, if we get the minutes for that, uh, let me just check to make sure. I was, wasn't sure because I've not seen minutes, I was wondering if, if, uh, it existed. But now you just have, so maybe it just has to get, uh, the minutes so we can record them and, uh, let me go back and look through the minutes to see if we reappointed the committee back at, at committee time. I don't, I don't remember.
We haven't talked about that in a long time.
And I don't, uh-
What do they do? What do you do, Mitch?
They would just talk about different issues around town.
Well, like the, uh, that clothing container that showed up at the transfer station. Like, we weren't aware that was coming and the guy was trying to like drop it in the middle of winter and we, Shelley called me, she's like, this guy's here with this big green box and he's trying, you know, dropping it here and that, you know, and, uh-
Actually, that's what was discussed.
Yeah, 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 so.
We, we got a, we've got a, uh, for clothes recycling, we put the big green thing in the dumpster and apparently someone failed to inform Shelley.
Yeah, yeah, and she called me and I went down, I go, I don't know anything about the big green box either.
Yes, so that was decided. That was one of the decisions that was made.
So what we need to do is, you know, let, let's make sure we even did this as a committee. I'm not sure that, uh, maybe this committee wasn't technically reappointed. So maybe at the next meeting, we'll just formalize this and get a schedule up, cause it's not on the website either. And if you're having meetings, it has to be on the website.
Well, a lot of our-
It's not in there.
A lot of our committees are not reappointed. They're, they're standing committees.
Is this just a standing committee, so it can just roll on?
Uh, until, until they change-
They stop, yep.
Okay, it's not in there, cause I looked after Bill called me. I was like, well, it's, it's not in the book anymore, so I don't really know.
But you don't exist. Not in the book, it don't exist.
That's right.
Who is the, do you have a chair of that committee?
I thought it was, uh, Bill. I, uh, Bill or Karen, one of the others. I think it was Bill.
Yeah. Oh, I'm trying to think of the other two people over there.
I'm sure there's a minutes out there. Someone, someone took minutes. Obviously, they put a big green box, uh, clothes recycling, that's part of the environment to prevent the waste from going, you know, throwing away clothes, but-
Where is it?
It's at the dump.
Oh, where?
Like, when you drive in, it's like right in front of you.
Oh, okay. I didn't know it was-
Well, it wanted a dead winter when there was snow everywhere and like, there's no room for a big green box right now.
That's great to know.
Instead of going, there's a few of them around town, obviously.
Well, it was happening there too. It's a good idea for there because people would bring clothes and there was like no place to put it.
Exactly.
And then they wind up in the swap shed for-
Well, there, there was talk about the swap shed too, we, uh, in that committee meeting. I mean, I'm not in the committee, I just went to it because I'm the liaison. And there was talk about the swap set shed and how to clean it up. People are just throwing stuff in there and it's not, it's not being used. We need, you know, if it's not functioning or working, you don't throw it in there to save yourself a nickel to-
Yeah.
Um, there's, uh, that was another issue. And actually, there was talk about closing the swap shed, but we aren't gonna do that, or they, it wasn't gonna happen, that. They were not going to close it.
It's in the contract.
That's all I remember about it. That green box triggered me. Planet Earth, right?
Yeah, Planet Earth. I had no idea who they were. I had to look them up.
Where's, where's the front of it?
I think-
Never heard of it.
Someone, one of the people in the committee looked into it and was gonna go ask around and get the best, and they said, sure, we'll put one there.
Great, good to know.
Checking our- A listing of the year-long meetings, like the Business Development Committee and all those things. I don't remember there being an environmental committee on there. Do you meet regularly or just when the urge strikes?
Uh, I have to go back. It's, I have, I have emails. I'm going back to see if I got anything in that.
Yeah, they are not part of the, uh, annual meeting notices, so that actually needs to happen. Uh, all town committees are subject to the Open Meetings Act, which means they have to have, uh, published meetings and, uh, being on this list of, of annual meetings, if you meet at a regular time, is good enough for that. Uh, but they're also subject to the rules- But they're also subject to the rules that say you have to get minutes posted on the website within five days too, so. I'll talk to Bill and see if we need to tighten up relative to those meetings.
Yeah, I don't seem to have anything written over.
So, I guess that was what you brought this up about, was to see what we need to do relative to having an Environmental Issues Committee. And what we need to do is get them on the, on the list of annual meetings. Find out when their meetings are, and then make sure that they're publishing their minutes.
Yeah, because I wasn't really thinking about it like a standing committee, because that can just go on and on, because it just, it's not referenced anywhere. So I could even see why Bill called, because it doesn't appear on anything we've had.
All right. I'll, I'll talk to Bill and we'll, we'll get that back on there, the list of official committees. All right, Select Board Goals. It's time we decide what we as a group are going to focus our efforts on in, in the next year. And what I have here is what our goals, looking back, let's look at what our goals were last year. We, building a new town garage has always been at the top of that list. We never really intended to build a town garage this year, but we have talked about it a lot and been thinking about how to, how to move forward on it in particular. We've talked about alternate, alternative sites for a town garage. And we revisited the size and cost estimates recently in looking at how much, how much garage, or how little garage makes sense to, to build. We said we were going to make improvements to Coal Hall, and we're in the process of doing that. David's got, we've assigned the contractor on the bathroom, and he's got more work planned for this summer. So, the have-to-get-done stuff for Coal Hall is going to get done this construction season.
Yeah, along those lines, just, this is going to come up. Well, it was that greenup day out here, I took a long look around the building. The exterior of this building needs work, and it needs paint. If some of it is, the wood is bare, has no paint on it. So it's kind of taking a different direction than I had hoped, but I think we're going to have to spend some money painting the exterior of the building.
The trim, mostly, the upper parts.
The steeple, everything. I think you do it, and you do it, you do everything at once. So I'm going to look into that, that'll probably chew up a big chunk of the money, but a lot of the woodwork is now bare. And very high up too, and you can't do parts of the steeple, it's one and all. And that will be an expensive part, but I want to get some pricing ideas on that. Because even going back to the Wesner Report a few years ago, it talks about the need to paint the exterior of the building. And parts of it certainly haven't been painted in that interim. So that's one of the big things that's going to be coming up. It's kind of a different direction than I wanted to go, but we have to start preserving the exterior.
Yeah, but the interior of this building, we've talked about for a long time, and we've put off and put off and put off. The interior work needs to get done, I think.
Well, I think there's a lot of discussion left to be had about what to do with the interior of this place. I dropped the wall on the office downstairs. I decided it would be unlivable for everyone in the office. It's just simply too small to get either side enough space, the other side would suffer dramatically. What I'm thinking more along the lines of now proposing is turning that office downstairs into more like a finance office and finding space for myself up here, and even compartmentalizing up here. If you can get a little visionary, it was pointed out to a couple of people to me in here that you could actually cube off part of this area and have offices here, it'd be cheaper than almost any other alternative, and you could dismantle it. So it doesn't do any permanent things to the room. And it was pointed out to me that from the top of the railing, straight across the bars of all these windows, is all at the same height. And you could put a drop ceiling in here and compartmentalize over there, and you could create all the office space you need in the building and still have something that could be dismantled, even have Coal Hall again. So, it's just thoughts to toss out there, but seeing that it's highly unlikely we're going to have any money to actually create the space, some innovative or different ways of looking at the space might come into hand here.
Where, where would we meet if we turned this all into cubicles?
No, I'm only talking about cubes over there, from where the file cabinets are. This would be a nicer closed-in meeting room here. And then you could have cube spaces over there where all this stuff is now open all the time, and there is a way of doing it. We wouldn't really be impacting the building permanently. This is kind of visionary in just speaking, because we have a lot of things to decide about this building. And, oh, I would love to spend a lot of money in here, but if you get into trying to restore this space, we frankly wouldn't have the money to do it. And then you're restoring a space that's still being used as offices instead of what it, what it is. There is just, just a lot of work, and it needs to be looked at in a lot of different ways, I think, to try and maximize the efficiency of the building. Downstairs, when you go to the Wesner Report, they're talking about the entire downstairs being basically the clerk's office. And the rest, everyone moving to additions in the back here. But those places were getting up to hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that, and that's not going to happen. So maybe there's a creative way of doing it in here, you know, and getting, getting the office space. Because when I did look at it downstairs, putting the wall in and standing in the front of the treasurer's desk and realizing that they were going to have this segment over here, and then if you push the wall back and give them some room, I'm going to have the wall literally in front of my desk, so it's kind of. You know, the report stated even a couple of years ago that it was barely sufficient for what it was being used for, now we have two more people in it. So it's, we have to try and make this area, I think, work more efficiently for the town. How are we going to do that? I don't, I don't know yet. But I think it's, it's a way of making changes at a less cost. And then the scheduling, because we could work out too for, for issues up here. But as I look at the treasurer and accounts payable and potential changes there, we need more space. And that's, that's a good cluster together. When people come in and pay, those are the people who need to be downstairs when people walk in, because that's who they come to see. Most of the time, when people come to see me, we have to come up here anyway, so we have someplace to talk. So it gets to be, this is the less-used, harsh portion of the building. You know, there's only listers here two days a week up here in the mornings, and the zoning administrator, three days a week in the mornings. So, like I said, just trying to think a little bit out of the box and look for different solutions to the ongoing space problem that we, you know, shorter building, another building. You know, we're going to have to address somehow. While we still do the necessary exterior work. Because as I said, when I had the roof fixed last year, and the part fell off the corner, so the steeple. And looking at, looking around closely Saturday morning, a lot of exterior work needs to be done, painting, woodwork outside. Because if the water starts migrating, the boards start rotting, it's just going to, it's a big pay now or pay later kind of prospect.
The roof itself is all right, though, right?
The roof, the roof is all right. We just, I had the slate done last fall, I had this all re-roofed, the new flashing put on, so it wasn't migrating behind the wood like it was. The steeple roof was repaired after the Wesner Report, so that should be fine. But the painting, if it was started, it wasn't completed. And there really are, I mean, on a close walk around, there's a lot of bare wood and a lot of wood problems, I would think, that need to be fixed. So, I think I'm going to start looking into how much that's going to cost. And then look into systems in here, you know, we'll take it piece by piece, but I think a little rearrangement is, is the solution. I thought that would be a quick solution downstairs, but it's not, it's a quick problem, I've decided. And given the heat in this building in the summer, we'd be creating two. You know, one, ceiling, air conditioning could do that office and the clerk's office, two of them would do downstairs, but if you split up, you're talking three, you're talking about interfering with the airflow, you're talking about turning what is, from last summer, I know, a very hot office into a really, two really hot offices. So, it sounded good when I first thought of it, but retrospect, it's not a very good idea. A thousand dollars can be spent, it's not a thousand dollars, but whatever it was can be spent better elsewhere. Even if it's a simple thing like getting a few partitions or something. But, yeah, I have more on it, but I'm thinking of maybe a rearrangement of the building to make it function better. And so that everybody has a little bit more space to work in, because it's a little, when there's three of us in the office downstairs and people are coming in, I think it gets to the point where it starts hurting productivity too, because it's like constant people in and out. And me asking people to leave so I can talk to somebody, or coming up here and setting the zoning clerk out, it's kind of, it's good. We have to, I'm looking for a neutral ground, a place to, place to win here with how we position people. And up here, because it is empty a lot, maybe up here would be the place to be. Because then people could come up and we could talk, and there wouldn't be anybody here. Things to think about.
Yeah, it's, it's a hard problem. This building is in no way suited to what we're trying to make it, make it do.
And I don't know if it's possible, I've seen it, as soon as I heard about it, I started looking into the possibility of doing this. There are all kinds of interior frames you can build that do not affect the building. It might be too elaborate to think of the whole place, but there's certainly cube off areas we could do over here that would make offices. Because you don't want to disrupt the nature of the building. Right, because this is, you know, it's, it's a nice old building, it's not, this isn't its functionality as being an office building, but we need to adjust it somehow so that we can work here. More to come, as I, I've tried to work through the problem.
Well, we've, we've heard for a long time that the heat is a, is a problem here in the summer. Are we going to be able to do anything about that this season?
I think what we can do is we can put in the two air conditioners downstairs. You get the ceiling, self-contained units that you can put in the ceiling, and you can air condition those two, the clerk's office and the Administration Finance Office. Up here, is manageable up here, to air condition up here, then you're getting into serious money. And that's just not going to happen. The only thing you can do, again, which is why the cubes come up, is if you had cubed offices over here, you could air condition those, but you can't air condition this space. The air handler alone would be enormous up here. I never had a problem with the heat up here in the summertime, in the wintertime. But in the summer, you know, come late afternoon, while you've been here for Select Board meetings, it's still, it's still toasty. But even when I was in zoning, I felt, you know, with proper fan positioning, you could make the afternoon work, and it's not, it's not terrible. A fix to that too, are a lot of these windows simply don't work. So, you know, get the windows to work, if you could open the windows a little bit and get some airflow in here, the natural airflow, most of the time, it's that door is open. And that's, that's it. Now, that's not, that's not the way to do it. This window over here opens a little bit. So, you know, there's things you can work out, you know, and which are cheaper, quicker fixes than trying to do some other things. And if we're going to do the exterior painting, then you get these windows, which I believe many of these were replaced. Then we could get them to, to open properly and get these giant screens off them. And put up wheels, you know, the storm windows, I guess these things are supposed to be, and put screens up on some, so you could get the air moving up here. And if you had the air moving up here, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be that terrible.
Gets pretty stifling when it's stagnant.
Oh, yeah, it gets pretty stifling up here, and then because the ceiling's so high and these fans really don't push a lot of air, yeah.
What about one of those Mitsubishi wall mounts, ACs?
Cold air, cold hair. It would be a big one.
Cold air goes down, falls down, though.
It would be a big one. This, the, I, if you did the math on this, it'd come out as one big, big unit, you would need.
Well, the other thing that would help is curtains on these windows to keep the sun out. And just, you know, for aesthetics, this Chatsbury Town Hall, we should be able to do better than
I would think.
Two-dollar shower curtain on a string, which is what we had.
I agree, yeah. That we need to work on, some simple painting in here would improve it a great deal.
Yeah, a quick coat of paint around this wall, leave it as clean as it is.
Just where it's gray in the patch and finish this wall here, I mean, you can brighten it up, although that amount of painting would probably not be that cheap either.
No.
But what concerns me, when you, when you start getting into the building, then you start, you have that whole section with the crack down. Where it's ground over there, there was a problem in that corner before, you had a crack up over here. The fallen pieces up here. With the limited funds, I'm just looking for the best way to apply them to get the biggest bang for them, and to, if we have to go outside first to preserve the inside, then.
I think, I think money spent on these three window treatments would be worth it.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, having, these have to look better, and the other windows, it really doesn't matter. I only found over in zoning, very early in the morning was a problem over there. But these three, if they were covered over, so and kept the direct sunlight, the afternoon sun is what really bakes in here, I mean, most of the time.
I mean, that's covered by the roof. Basically, you just need one, two, three, four, and leave those two ends, they don't get sun in there.
Yeah, those, there's never any sun problem over there. Yeah, it's really, these two are the worst, and the listers would be the third. But you could get stuff to kind of match.
Well, I mean, there's no reason to do two of the three west-facing walls, let's put curtains over all three.
Exactly, all three in one, make them match, you know?
Like, these were just purchased to quickly and temporarily fix the situation. Like I did today when I moved it from that window to this window, so I appreciated that, yeah.
But, I mean, this has got to get done. We just can't kick the can down the road forever and say we don't have the funds to make this building livable and presentable, and it's just getting worse and worse, so.
We have a good amount of money this year, so I expect to be able to do some of these projects. And then we'll see where we are and move on. But I think a repositioning might be in line to try and make, make the office function work better.
And that involves a ceiling?
Well, if, if at that point, I'll come back to you on that. This is just kind of, you know, an idea at this point. But if we got into ceilings and walls, believe me, we'd be back here with a hole. Because we're changing a whole thing when you get that far into it. But I'm even talking about repositioning offices somewhat, perhaps myself coming up here, moving zoning over, we've talked about this before, move zoning over, because the listers will move over a little bit, and that would free up a lot of space downstairs too, so that we're not all packed into that room too. Because it would make it a little bit easier for working, just thinking in, but when three people are working, it's like any environment, when three people are working from a distance from me to a little past Ken over there, it gets a little, it's a little crowded.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I've been in your office. In David's office all the time. You know, I'm standing there talking to him, and the treasurer's trying to take a phone call. And, you know, with two people talking in that close a space, you can't both be functional. Or worse, the treasurer's taking a phone call, and David's trying to concentrate on his spreadsheet, it's, it's impossible.
And then, you know, John will be in there, people come in constantly from the clerk's office to get something from the treasurer, to get something from me, and back and forth, and, you know. Mostly the people who come in, you know, the treasurer is someone, when you walk in that door, treasurer, accounts payable is someone that should be there to see, so the easiest person to move would be me, because I can be up here and I can come down. People come up to see me, actually just want to talk about something, and then we have to go find a place to talk. Or, you know, they're standing there, which I always feel bad about, people come in and want to talk about a problem, and if everyone's in the office, they have to stand there. I mean, it's kind of.
So do you want to make a goal of getting window treatments for the four windows, east and west? Well, one, two, three, four, because this one's under.
That one's under the roof, so we don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, I thought you were saying that the east windows were not a problem.
Well, that, that one in the morning.
In the morning.
Okay.
Well, one, yeah, two, four. I'll look into four, and, I mean, those who are up there now. I look into four, and, I mean, those who are up there now, they really should go, because that's...
Yeah, they should get it mounted properly.
Now, you know, at least, they originally were glued up, we kind of screw in them now, but this isn't the way you do it. I'm sure we can do better than that.
Yes.
All right, well, I'll just move ahead with some of that and think about moving, moving some office locations around.
Do you have a contact, those cubes, I mean, we have these partitions here, Reid-Bothos or whatever, the town hall?
Yeah, those you can get almost anywhere, but, yeah, I'll come back with more interesting views on cubes and things like that. There's a whole world of manufacturing out there to deal with situations like this, and it's just a question of going out and being a little creative about it. The big thing to me would be if, if something can be found at a reasonable cost, it's something that can be installed and removed without doing any damage to the building.
And the cubes, the walls in the cubes are meant to absorb the sound, so when you're talking, I mean, I worked in cubes all my life, I mean, I'm on phones, the people next to me are on the phone, different conversations, I mean, you deal with it.
And you can have cube, cube walls that are taller than that, which helps.
Yep, taller, yep.
The other thing that is gonna, you're gonna run into right away, though, is right now, our cubical dividers are file cabinets, which are, you know, two feet thick and three feet wide, and that's, that's not an efficient use of space.
No, no, it's not.
Are those fireproof ones too?
No. Yeah, no, they're not fireproof. But we had looked at, the listers, myself, even when I was in zoning, we looked at how to divide space up here, and we think we can make it, make it all work with, with the lister zoning and myself up here. And it just frees up space downstairs too, so people are comfortable too. It does get, anybody who's been in the office when other people are in there, it gets cramped and a little disorganized when everybody's talking and doing things. At least up here, it would be quiet, you know, the listers are here two mornings a week, and Shelley's here three days, three mornings, and the rest of the time it would be a functional space.
Yeah, you're right, that's a lot of space for some part-timers.
Yeah, yeah, and we need space, so, you know, it's a thing to do.
So, coal hall improvements were on our goals, we think, we just talked about how we're still apparently debating how that's going to move forward, but we are going to do something this construction season about coal hall. The other goal we had was to redesign and keep current the town website. On the keep current part, we've done a good job, we have procedures in place that keep things regularly updated, particularly relative to the Open Meetings Act that requires our website be kept up to date relative to minutes and that sort of thing. We now have a place on the, on the, on the website for RFPs and bid requests that anybody can, can come and check out, so that's a much more open process, thanks to our, our website. And just, just recently, we started publishing our weekly road plan, so that we can keep the citizens informed about how that's, what our plans are relative to grading and road maintenance and that sort of thing. So, in terms of keeping the website current, we have improved things there. As far as redesigning the website, we just didn't get to it.
Yeah.
We had ideas, we talked about it a little bit, it's just one of those things, we don't really know how to go forward with it, except we all agree that we shouldn't split the phone numbers by elected official versus appointed official, but we don't really have a real plan for that, and it just never made it to the top of the priority list, so...
It's a real time thing to sit down and go through it, we all see different flaws we would like to correct, and it's corralling them all and getting them changed, but we're trying.
But, by and large, I think the most important thing on the website is to keep it current, so that people, when they go, and if they are able to find the information, and you can find the information, it's maybe not the, the most immediate set of clicks to get there, but you'll find it, and we're, we're always keeping an eye on that, and that, that's real important.
Obviously, it's being updated weekly, right? Is it a Friday afternoon update or for Monday morning, or?
For what, what aspect?
Just regular up, it says, procedures in place for regular updates, weekly road plan would be updated?
Oh, the road plan is changed every Monday morning.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, and I do, when I scan through it, like I've asked for updates from different things, we just started taking down stuff from the landfill, because it had some things on there that we're clearly not doing, and I've encouraged, through the other department and other people, check your site, check your area of the website, and keep it current. It'd be much easier if everybody who has, you know, from the DRV Planning Commission all the way down to everybody, if you read your section of the website and say, hey, you know, we need this to change, that would be an efficient way. Every time I see something that, you know, I know is outdated, you know, I'll just call Jen and say, change this, you know?
And she's, she's pretty responsive.
Oh, yeah, you know, she's, she's very helpful, very good. As soon as we have a chance, she's going to come over, we're going to do a little training and also start changing things on the website, because the other Jen was doing that, and my cheat sheet doesn't seem to work, or the operator of the cheat sheet doesn't seem to know how to work it, so I'm going to have Jen from the website come over and give me some more instruction, and then I'll just start editing it from my desk.
And I get, Dave and I both get the minutes circulated to us that we, we do with the initial set of corrections on, usually by Wednesday of the week, and then by Friday they're on the website. As far as 2015 goals, we've got some big things to decide about the roads, and that's what I'm, I've got here as far as roads. We have to make a decision about a new road foreman, whether to report, promote from within or to, to reach out. As we started to discuss last week, now that we're down to a five-man crew, we're kind of taking a wait-and-see attitude to see how the summer maintenance schedule goes. That begs the question of, of the ideal road, the ideal size for the road crew, and how we, how we make that decision, and what Dave and I have been kind of talking about is, let's evaluate the, this summer, let's evaluate the, how the maintenance goes, and see if we think we are staying on top of things with, with the five-man crew, if that's the optimal size. And the other thing, you know, we've started to ask is, you know, relative, particularly to this issue that's, we, we talked about last week of, you know, make, having a schedule for laying fabric and replacing the road base. Places in this town have never had a road base, perhaps, so, you know, what, is there a, is there a balance between, you know, what is, what is the right size to have a crew versus what you contract out on that sort of thing? And also, what you contract out in terms of winter plowing as well. It, it doesn't have to be that we have all the plowing done by our guys, it can be supplemented, like we have somebody that drives the sidewalk machine to clear the sidewalks. So, those are questions that we need to look at. The schedule I'm suggesting for making that decision is that we, we look and see how it goes this summer, we start to gather information on what it costs to do things like lay a mile of fabric, by having it done as a contractor, as opposed to doing, doing it with our own guys, with our own equipment, and see if we think a change is in order. In particular, you know, if we're going to go to the, and then think about in the late fall or summer, finalizing our decision on who the foreman is and what the size of the crew is, and that ties directly into our other big decision, is what are we going to go to the voters with in March of 2016 relative to a garage? And how big the crew is and how much equipment we have figures directly into that. And similarly, if we use this summer to continue to explore those ideas that we touched on before about how big a garage or how small a garage we can, we can build effectively, and then by late summer, early fall, we need to have decided where the garage is going to be and how big it's going to be, and how big the, the road crew figures into that. And then in the fall or winter of this year, we need to start finalizing our proposal that we're going to put to the voters to, to go forward with a garage.
So, I mean, as far as, I think that's reasonable, all reasonable, everything we got laid out for the summer, fall, and winter, but if the contracting versus our people men doing it, I'm just, you know, we've got all new equipment, we've got everything, you know, everything's there, we've bought and we're paying for it, I'm wondering, you know, how, we're going to get a contractor to drive one of the trucks for the winter, or a part-time for the winter help or something like that? I'm not sure, I mean, you're not going to hire a tandem truck to go plow the back roads, are you?
Well, as far as plowing goes, the only place it becomes an issue is on the paved roads anyway, and if we contracted one, the contractor would be on the paved roads.
In town and stuff, huh?
Yeah, we are unlikely, I would think, depending on what we decide on the crew size, there's an option of dropping the truck almost immediately. We have a one-ton that's expiring, and we have the Dodge Ram that we'd like to move on, so will we have that extra vehicle? Well, we don't need to have it if we don't want it. The one-ton we can stretch out, which I had proposed doing anyway, just to save money for a couple more years, so once you dropped a one-ton, that was one of the plowing vehicles, and you get rid of the one-ton, you trade in the Dodge Ram, you replace the two with one vehicle, and you're down one. You know, right there, you're down one. Many towns across the state contract out, across the state, contract out part of the winter plowing, some contract, the majority of the winter plowing. It's just something to have on there, you have long-term cost of the employee, you have long-term cost of the truck, and you need to carry it through the whole year. The equipment for construction, granted, we have a lot of equipment for construction, but the grader, I think, is pretty much going to run year-round now, so it's going to be cutting into the amount of construction that we can do. The Volvo, granted, is a great piece of equipment, but we have a backhoe and a grader, the Volvo will be out doing a lot of ditching too, keeping up with maintenance and those items. You know, we don't, in my opinion, you don't necessarily want a, enough equipment to be like a road construction company, you know, because we should be a road maintenance company. We have, with the little amount of fabric we can lay this year, 2,100 feet, that's a project in phases that can be done without impacting a lot of other things, but I think it's reasonable to try and assess what we have, how many people we have, how we can cut back on some things. The equipment, as Ken's pointed out, that Volvo's not old, but it lost a ton of value the second we rolled it out onto the street. So, what I look at is the savings in the long run from that is, you project something like that for 25 years, but in the usage we're putting on it, we have ourselves a 30-year piece of equipment.
You take, you take care of that, David.
It'll last.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, like I say, you're using it 15 hours a month.
Yeah.
Right now.
It'll last, it'll be around a long time if it's well-maintained.
Right.
So, it, it's a question, it's a balancing act, and I think one of the reasons why Tim and I talk about going through a season is let's see how it works out. I mean, we have vacation issues to look at too, but the road crew wasn't always six people, so maybe it doesn't have to be six people, maybe we'll get halfway through the summer and go, boy, we better hire somebody, you know, I mean...
Well, the wintertime is when you need them.
The wintertime is what everyone's called me, is when we need them, and what do we need them for in winter, we need them for when it snows.
Yeah, but that was, that's been historic, back in the 70s, the 60s, they always put on one or two more guys and a truck.
Yeah.
Or two trucks.
Yeah.
Just for the winter.
And lots of towns contract, I mean, we, if we drop this truck and we're down to a five-man crew and five trucks, then we contract for a guy and his truck, which many, many, many towns do statewide, and they come out and they plow, in our case, it would be plowing the paved streets. Two of our trucks do the paved roads, so one of them would have a paved route, and, you know, it's, it's like any other contract, guy signs up for it, and for a lot of people around here, local people who have the right equipment and spread them, they'd be...
Well, you could make it two ways, you could put tool in their vehicle.
Yeah.
Or they could put their own tool in, you've got another man that you're not paying unemployment, Woodscop and all that other, they can stop.
Yeah, I mean, we do do, basically, we do the same thing now on a much smaller scale, we hire the gentleman to plow the sidewalks, and so we just hire a gentleman with a truck to plow part of the road routes. You know, it eliminates from the town a lot of year-round costs, and everything from insurance, payroll, everything, so...
You just furnish them with sand and the salt they use.
Yeah, go out and fill it, we'll fill you up right out back here.
And the thing I keep coming back to, just because it was a revelation to me, and it shouldn't have been, but the idea that road base doesn't last forever, and just like we have to have a plan for how we replace the, the road equipment, however much it is, whether it's maintenance or construction equipment, we have to have a plan for laying fabric, and, you know, pick a number, 20 years, 50 years, how long does that road base last? If we're going to have good roads, we've got to have a plan for rebuilding road base, and it, our current plan is 2,100 feet a year, half a mile, so, you know, every hundred years, we'll get to the...
We'll finish the roads.
Get to the roads, all the roads will have new base.
And everything they say, so...
Except that they won't, because we're spending that 2,100 feet every year on the high-travel areas, and places like the Hollow never get attention.
Yeah, it'll be, because everything will, will give you a 20-year horizon on a road surface, that should be, you know, from maintenance through plane replacement, and we're nowhere, we're nowhere near that standard. It's the same with the chloride we were talking about earlier, I mean, you know, we don't have budget enough to do every road at once, and the numbers that we were just going through, and we started looking at where we were. So, you know, there's a whole bunch of different things that we have to look into and get, you know, the planning is, is everything. When we start planning, how do we place roads on a better cycle, it doesn't necessarily have to be 20 years, but it should certainly be less than 100 years.
You're, you're moving toward that now, it's Steve, right, on your computer program?
Yeah, yeah, we're getting into that, and even the work we're doing now, we're putting that into the database, and then we'll start creating, when we get through the first cycle here, what roads, the guys have seen, there's a whole way of grading the roads that they'll each do, it's like a windshield thing as you drive around, and then we can, it's basically, we'll score what you need to do and what looks worse, and you prioritize. Some roads are weighted more because they're the higher-traffic roads, I mean, and then there's a great many that are very low-volume roads, but at least you start to be able to see what needs attention, and, you know, Steve and I drove around on Thursday, he was showing me some of the sections that he was looking at for the fabric for this year, I mean, just parts where the fabric just ended like here, and it would be nice if it had gone to there, you would have had a whole problem taken care of, and a couple places where new problems cropped up. So, the, the fabric will be spread around, it's not going to be a stretch of 2,100 feet, but it will be spread around some. And even looking at this summer, there's still going to be a question, if we get the grant for Airport Road, you know, we'll evaluate whether or not that should be the first thing that goes out to a private contractor, or whether we'll have the time to do a project that big, and we'll have to look through the cost of that, or maybe a mixed bag with that one. But it's the efficiency of, you know, applying your resources to things, and do you get more maintenance in Airport to turn into a big project, so, you know, weigh everything as we go along. I think by the end of the summer season, we'll have a good idea of what direction we should go in, if we get the grants.
How did I end up with the worst chair at the table here?
I know, I keep thinking, too.
I feel like I'm going to fall over my back. Item 18, a town administrator's report.
Okay, I sent around to everybody the invitation to bid, heating, oil, propane, gas, and diesel fuel, this goes out every year at this time, so with the board's approval, I'm just going to put out the bids for buying fuel again for next year.
Looked good to me.
Yes, good to me.
So, move. We have a motion from Art to accept your bid specifications for fuel oil, was there more than one?
Uh, it actually goes out in, in... It actually goes out in a group. It's heating, oil, propane, gas, and diesel fuel, all in one spec form. You can bid for all or individually.
Okay. So, you're, you have a motion to accept your bid request for heating, oil, propane, and?
Energy. Energy expense.
Heating, oil, propane, gas, and diesel fuel.
Those three things, yes. Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, 5-0-0.
Yeah, another thing I had sent out was the hazard mitigation plan, with just a few updates that you saw. It was virtually all accepted by FEMA, a few things had to be changed. There's any discussion on that, it'll just go back to Boston for them to read again. The changes were made by Mike Batchery, who coordinates this stuff for BRCRC. Pretty much, when we did the one in Sunderland, Mike did the whole thing, we had the same thing. You know, no matter what, you're right, they send it back with a few changes and.
And you put that up on the website too?
The changes are not up on the website. If you want me to re-submit it, I can probably put that one up, but it's going to start to get confusing.
Wait until it's finalized.
The final one that comes back from, because we've approved it, this is the normal editing that goes back and forth with FEMA. They would like it to sound this way and they want you to add this, but there's no substantive changes in it. You know, it won't affect really anything that the town's doing.
I thought that Table 27 with all the hazard mitigation areas, if, that Table 27, there's like 100 items in there and they label them low, medium, high, and they're specific actionable items.
Yes, I actually asked Mike about that. When you mentioned that before, I was thinking, I didn't ask him about a table, now I asked him about that. It's, none of this is something we have to leap into and cure by the end of the year or anything, but.
He does have dates on them.
It's hazards that they see and that they, hazards is kind of a loose word too for some of it, but.
They're opportunities to prepare for, prepare for unforeseen.
I was amazed that somebody actually kept track of like the natural, you know, the snowfalls.
Oh, yeah.
The storms and.
Isn't that amazing?
I was really impressed.
I mean, they can tell you when this fire happened over here and how many acres it was.
White rock.
How much wind, yeah, yeah.
That's why there's white rocks up there is because of the fire.
Oh, is that right?
They burn off, that's why, that burn off all the trees there and it's never grown back.
Yeah, it is amazing how much data is out there. Give Mike credit for pouring through all this data to find this stuff.
Yeah.
Not easy to do.
No.
So, do we need a motion to accept the latest draft of the hazard mitigation plan?
I don't think we need a motion, it's just can be by consensus because we're really just sending it back to FEMA with the corrections that Mike Batchery made. We're really not doing anything. If anyone here wanted to change anything, I would think that would need a motion, but we're just accepting our editor's viewpoint on it. And he's a professional at it, so.
By consensus, then we'll send it back to FEMA?
The last thing I had, besides the LEOP, but we'll get to that inside tomorrow, maybe.
The which?
The LEOP, the Emergency Operations Plan. We need a signature for that, but we'll get to that.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to bring up tonight was the, an audit for the town, a financial audit for the town, and this is getting even deeper than I thought it would be. So, basically, by law, the treasurer is audited by the town auditors just before every turnover and that's all well and good, but I found a audit policy signed in 1999 by the Select Board of Shrewsbury. That requires an audit every three years unless the treasurer is reelected, then it can be.
Six years.
The six years. So, it doesn't appear that the town has had an audit since the close of fiscal 2010. We're now approaching the close of fiscal 2015 and we're on our third treasurer. We probably do not have the money for this audit. We only have $11,542 in the audit reserve fund, but if we don't start the planning for this and start getting this going, it's just going, the price is just going higher and higher. Now, in talking with Margie today, what I believe to have been a full financial audit from 2010, she believes was just a single audit which is done for federal grants. So, I started reading this, I'm still kind of mixed on what it is, but we're looking to it further, so the actual full audit of the town could be even further back. So, I don't want to wait any more years because each year that we move further away from the last one is gets more expensive. So, what I'd like to do is start putting together, I thought I'd have a bid spec for tonight, because I started researching big bid specs as they're out today, they're getting more and more complicated and many, many pages of things and different towns and people are doing it differently, so by the next meeting, I would like to bring in a bid proposal for the audit of the town of Shrewsbury. And let's get it out there and let's see how much this is going to cost because I think we need to do it.
Yeah, I agree. The $11,000, if that's in the current, don't we allocate money to that?
Yeah, like $4,000.
$4,000, so we get another $15,000.
We'll have like $15,000 and I'm thinking.
How much did the last one cost, do we know?
I didn't actually find that before the meeting, but I can guarantee you that $15,000 isn't going to go very far.
I think it was like $30,000 or something last audit, I think. Just ringing a bell, I don't know if it's true or not.
Well, and that's why, besides the fact that now that I've come across this policy, that we, you know, it's a policy, but I think it's a good policy that we should follow this and it's just a lot of time's gone by. I think we should just do it and we'll find the money.
Got to do it.
We need to, it's just, it's just business, we have to do an audit of the books. And if it's been five years since this one and this was only a single audit, then it's been even longer since the whole town's been audited. And it's cost of doing business and I think we really need to do it. And once we do it and once we start doing it every three years, it'll be cheaper.
Much cheaper.
And we can just program the money in so that every three years, they're just hired and they do it just like we buy a truck or anything else. It's a financial necessity for the town. So, I was hoping to have it on the agenda for tonight for a bid, but the scope started getting really large and I need more time to look at it because we want to have the right thing going.
Yep, make it so.
What would be the timing of it? Would you want it to be done this fiscal year or next fiscal?
Well, we can't, I doubt I could even get one started this fiscal year, so it'd be fiscal '16.
September.
And, I mean, it would all depend on when they can start it. This is going to be a long audit, this is going to be expensive, I think. And, you know, I'm just thinking of how many volunteers and how many interns I'm going to have to get from the local colleges to start pouring through the documents up here and bring them down for the auditors and I think it could, it'll turn into be a production, no doubt. But it's time to do this.
Pony up.
Like I said, it's not going to get any cheaper, so we'll just do it.
Okay.
One thing that Steve, the last thing I want to bring up, or Steve wanted to bring up, we talked about schedules and we're talking about nines and fours for the road crew. That'd be four nine-hour days and Fridays, they'd work four hours. Fridays could be used for a little grading and ditching and more importantly, for equipment maintenance and have everything back in instead of people trying to rush through that at the end of the 10-hour day on Thursday, we'll get the equipment properly, rework for the following week. And the four nines isn't going to be much of a difference in productivity over the four tens, it just actually adds the morning on to catch up on things. I understand, Ken, maybe you remember that nines and fours we used here before? I don't know if they were here when you did it, but some people were telling me that it used to be done that way here, so.
It seems like when I worked there, it was like five nines.
Yeah.
Didn't have any overtime or didn't have any, just 45 was your work weight.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think they'll go for that. So, we'll do the nines and fours and they haven't, we haven't discussed a date, I'm not sure when they usually go up to the summer. I think they're looking for some guidance for the board.
Memorial Day.
But.
I think it depends on grading.
Grading, yeah, they're getting through the first round. So, I'll talk to Steve and we'll come back to the next meeting with a date to start. It won't be before the next meeting, that's for certain. But if nines and fours works for the board, then it's working for the crew.
Yeah.
We'll do that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sounds good. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Dave. Any other business?
Have we heard anything about the animal control officer?
Yes and no, and that's still in progress and I'll keep you posted on that.
Okay, thank you.
It's, I'm still looking into it, there's those issues and things, we're going back and forth.
Okay.
Ken brought up the issue of the trees on the sidewalk. Dave, can you find out from KAS if they're going to work around those trees? And then I said I would talk to Bill on the IEC about their meeting schedule and I swear there was another thing I was going to write down, but needed action.
Natural resources. Natural resources, who's going to check on that?
Yeah, okay, I'll do that. I move that if there's nothing else, I move we go into a brief executive session for an update on personnel situation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.